Pursuant the Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, P L Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's February 18, 2022 revised order, meetings of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will continue to be conducted both in person and remote through July 15, 2022. In-person attendance will be limited to Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee members, superintendent, and all district school administrators. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted at this time, however, the meeting may be accessed remotely through Zoom. Then I list it to those reasonably anticipated by the chair, and not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Those items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB and the school committee recorder and other members of the public and will be broadcast once transcribed and approved minutes will be made public and posted to our website. So first, I'm going to take attendance. Ann Hutchinson.
Here.
Jason St. Peter.
Here.
Bonnie. Bonnie Raffoni. I know she's here. Thank you. There she is. Bill Field.
Here.
Diane Sager.
Here.
John Stephen. Do you see them?
No.
Okay. Cory Sprague.
Here.
Rich DeHoney.
Here.
And here. So that's the attendance. We first have our minutes of March 10, 2022. Do you have a motion?
Some move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Bill, a second by Cory. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Ann.
Aye.
Jason. Aye. Bonnie.
Aye.
Molly.
Aye.
Bill. Aye. Diane.
Yes.
Cory.
Aye.
Rich. And I. It's unanimous. Let's start with the FY 21 audit review.
John should be on. Do you might need to represent yourself.
John, what's his last?
Yes, so he's on. He should be.
He needs to be promoted.
No, no. We didn't.
Hey, John.
Yep.
Hello. Good evening. Sharon, is there any anything you want to say before I get going?
No. Go ahead, John.
Okay.
Please.
Okay.
Okay. So I do feel a lot familiar faces, but for anyone who doesn't know, my name is John Javlet. I'm a manager at Melanson. We have been doing the school district audit since FY 15, and I myself have 10 years of experience doing units of audit. So I believe you all have an electronic copy of the financial statements available to you, so I'm going to keep this as I have in years past relatively brief, kind of do a larger overview, and if anyone has any questions along the way, feel free to stop me, and I can go into more detail on anything. So I will start off by saying the financial statements that you have, they consist of five parts. The first part is the opinion, which is the only thing in your financial statement that comes from us, Melanson, your auditors. The rest of the information is all driven from your internal information, and the rest of that is the management discussion and analysis, which comes right after our opinion. There are two sets of financial statements. There's the government-wide financial statement, which basically condenses everything, all of the general funds, special revenue funds, everything into one column. The idea was to kind of make it look more like a business and make it more readable for more users. The second set of financial statements are the fund-based financial statements, which is closer to probably what you guys review on a somewhat regular basis. And lastly are all of the footnotes that go into more detail on each of the statements. So I will direct your attention to page 11, which is the statement of net position. This is the government-wide financial statement. Second, if you look down near the bottom, the second to last line is labeled unrestricted, and it is a large bracketed number, which generally speaking is not a good thing, however, it is a direct relation to your large unfunded OPEC liability, and also partially the pension liability, although your pension liability has continued to decrease over the last several years, and the main driving factor behind that is that the Berkshire County, the percentage funded, the retirement system is, has continued to increase. It's now at 90, almost 96%, which reduces all of the liability for member towns. So that that number was actually about 2 million last year. Yeah, so it's gone gone down a bit, and you know, indications would continue to go down inversely. The OPEC liability continued to go up. So, you know, as I, you know, fully have stated in prior meetings past, you know, something to consider to try to start funding that OPEC liability, to put some money aside, but yeah, obviously times are tough, and you know, you can only do so much with what you Does anyone have any questions on any of that?
I'm not seeing any.
I will then direct you a couple pages ahead on page 13. Page 13, and so this is your governmental fund balance sheet, and it's broken into a few columns. It has your general fund, your school choice fund, which is considered a major fund mainly because the asset, this term cash, is a large enough portion of your total fund, so it gets its own special column. So I will direct you to the general fund column down near the bottom under fund balances. You will see the unassigned balance of 1.5 million, and that is your unassigned amount, which is essentially what gets certified as excess and deficiency. The number right above that, the 921, is a combination of your reserve for expenditures, which is the E and D used in the first quarter, along with your encumbrance. And the number just above that, the 201, is the bound of stabilization fund for the The rest of it, you know, you can kind of go through at your leisure. Those are the main sticking points I usually talk about. Does anyone have any questions on that, those statements?
No, I don't see any.
And that is fine. You know, overall, the, you know, the district is in a, you know, in a healthy, stable position. This year, their excess and deficiency was over the 5%, which means funds were required to be returned back to the member towns. And we're seeing that a bit more this year as more funding has come in from federal and other sources. So I wasn't planning on going over specific revenues and expenses. I know you guys probably talk about those a bit more regularly. Yeah, and I mean, basically, your expenditures were under budget, which is good, but that was the main driving factor of the amount of E and D being exceeding the limit and requiring a refund to the member towns.
John, this is Peter, the superintendent.
Yeah.
Can you talk about, so people have context on this, the lack of any significant findings and how that's actually both unusual and very positive?
Yes. Yeah, so this year, there, as of this point, I will, I will put into context, we do still need to do the grant audits. The Fed had pushed back their deadline on the federal grant audit, so we haven't done those yet, so technically, there is a subject, there may be something there, may not be. But yeah, for the financial statement audit, we didn't have any finding, which, which is awesome. You know, we had a few, or actually, really just one suggestion that we talked already talked about with Sharon, and it certainly wasn't nothing major, but all in all, yes, we, you know, we reviewed the internal controls related to all of your major transaction cycles, you know, review accounts for compliance, you know, different accounts have different compliance standards, and yeah, we didn't have any issues, so that's a big hurrah to Sharon and her team in the business office. We also, we have, at this point, we have completed the district's end-of-the-year report, which gets submitted to DECE, and there were also no findings on that as well.
Terrific. Sharon, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I don't. It was, we've been doing it remotely, and that's worked really well, and I'm happy that there are no findings.
Yeah. That's true.
It wasn't always that way.
Does anyone have a question? Revolted for each of them. Ann? I'm seeing no questions. Rich, very much.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Have a good one.
Good to have you. Up to the superintendent's report.
Okay. Good. So John is done. So I think a couple of quick good news things. I know we've got a particularly long agenda tonight. I'm involved with some work statewide with the Mass Association of School Superintendents around diversity, equity, and inclusion, and out of that, I got invited to a separate cohort called Leading Now, and that's a cohort of 12 to 15 superintendents doing parallel work, and I just got invited to it, but we're going to do, I think, five remote sessions and then one day-long session in Hartford, and it's neat because it's an opportunity around my own professional growth, and, and particularly around better messaging work around diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I'll share updates on that as I know, know more. Katie, anything super exciting at the elementary school? And please talk about drum fit, which is remarkable.
Yes, that's on my list. So we are just finishing up with most of the classes, a gym unit with using the newly purchased drums to do drum fit cardio drumming, and it's a workout that Peter did not partake in yesterday, but he watched.
Whoa.
He was a spectator.
I'm going to, now I have to share a photo.
You shouldn't do that. But yes, it is quite a workout. The kids love it. They were even improvising yesterday, so that was cool.
There, there you go.
There you go. Yeah. That's not me.
It totally is you.
That's smart.
That's what we get.
Tomorrow, we have, we had a tie for the vote for our first theme day to celebrate earning 1,054 high fives for kindness. So you could, you can do a costume, or you can be a twin. Ms. Carrie and I are going to be Miss Coyotes twins. We're working on the costume as we speak. We did receive our final Stoke report, which I'll share with you. We have a rollout plan. We'll share with you. We're going to send the final report to the staff so that they can get warm and cool feedback through their teacher coordinator in a team meeting. We'll have a debriefing with Stoke and the staff at a faculty meeting in May. We are going to share recommendations with the families on the way, and then we're going to do a debriefing with the Stoke staff and myself at a coffee hour in May. So we're going to further require that these recommended, recommendations that are being addressed be part of our summer PD proposals. So people have to relate what they're working on to the recommendations if possible, and then, of course, we'll use it with the school council early next year when we start working on next year's school improvement. There's, there's a couple of just highlights or things that I want you to have in mind. It certainly reflected some of the things, especially in the area of communication, but there, it wasn't really a representative group. A majority of the people we interviewed were not families of color or students, families that have students with disabilities, but some of them were, most of them were the more typical folks in and out of color and not with kids with disabilities. So there are the recommendations we certainly have to consider, but they're not the overarching, really representative communities that we had hoped for, but certainly we'll look at them and add them to the larger report. So certainly, if you have any questions, you can certainly send them my way, and we'll try to get them answered.
Yeah, Ann.
So they drum up my hose balls.
So it's basically, they have a base.
Which is a five-gallon container.
Some of them are five-gallon containers, and some of them are just like a, it looks like a collar that you just put, it's closer to the ground, and then it's just a yoga ball, basically, that's blown up and set on top of it with people drumming.
Does it make noise?
Oh, yeah. They did a lot of Queen songs yesterday.
So if I can pull this off, just be patient for a sec.
Peter has an eight-minute music video.
You feel bad about something. We are the champions. That was one of them.
Now I can't pull it off. I'll send it around.
You can send an email, yeah.
For some reason, my computer doesn't want to play videos, which is probably just as well. So Ben, just share a couple of things.
Sure. I just wanted to be short, but I did. I shared a lot last meeting. A few weeks ago, we had our teacher development group, which is a math instructional PD come through. We've been doing it for many years. Really exciting, just a way for math teachers to leave it at the heart of math reasoning as the authority in the classroom for kids and not write and wrong answers, not, you know, not really focusing so much on doing math in a particular way, or wishing kids to be not just creative, but successful. It's a really collaborative piece where all of the colleagues come into some of these classrooms, the studio, teacher, and lessons planned, and get to see it, and if you breathe it, it's all in the context of women's instructional practices. It really has taken off. It's just really an exciting program. So it's our, I think our last major for the year. It was really, really good. Actually, we've just had a really strong magic for the past now four years, which is really awesome. And also, I just want to really highlight collaborative care. It's a collaboration with Macany and CHP, and the pediatricians, we do monthly with all the pediatricians, and it really helps us solve problems with families that seem tractable, or really uncovers really great opportunities for kids and for families between teachers or clinical teams and pediatricians. So it's just, I just want to highlight how important that's been to really supporting families and, of course, kids. And then we have a ceremony announced tomorrow, a week in advance, where we set graduation date, which is really good. So Wednesday, June 15, we're going to have a very good graduation in the gymnasium, like we've had before. It'll be really good. We've had kind of different ceremonies the past two years because of COVID, and just feels really good to be able to celebrate our kids full-time and with the whole family. So I'm really excited about it.
Great. So we'll, we'll turn it over to Julian and Zoe.
Awesome. We'll go short as well, because I think we have a long meeting ahead of us, but tomorrow, the quarter ends, so that's sort of a third milestone in the year that seems to be flying by. Stress sort of is relieved at that point, but AP tests are around the corner, so we're hopeful for those, and I think students have been doing a lot of great work to prepare for those, and teachers as well. A lot of work has been done with Stoke and implementing restorative justice practices in the vice principal's office, so moving away from sort of the punitive way of suspending students to more of a forward-thinking way. And then this week has been very, very stressful and also exciting for our seniors, as a lot of colleges are coming back with acceptances. Today's Ivy League Day, so our fingers are crossed for our seniors today.
Yeah, we've got lots of stuff going on at our school. Today, we had our first student advisory board meeting since we got back from February break, and we've got a new coordinator for that, which is Mr. Wright, and we added two new subcommittees, so Equity and Diversity and the Crew Subcommittee on top of the Wellness, Proficiency, and Deleveling Communications and kind of School and Environment Subcommittee. Some ideas that were circulating at that meeting today were about mental health first aid training for all of our coaches and potentially captains for sports teams. We're working with Ianna Smith, the district wellness coordinator, on that. There's also hopefully going to be a freshman town hall type thing for more discussions about proficiency learning, and we are talking about opening up the outdoor classrooms again as it warms up to try to get back some of the energy that we had at the end of last year that was so positive. The freshmen had their freshman fun day, I think, last week, was it? And that was like a huge success. They were hiking and tie-dying and overall making everyone else very jealous, crushing it. The therapy dogs have been brought in, and I've gotten to see them at work sometimes in the library when I'm having my study hall, and just animated, like, it seems to be really getting through to people, and that's been awesome to see. And our chess tournament is in full swing. I got knocked out in the second round. My racket was way off, but it should be an exciting game. I think Benny Rosenbauer is playing either Mr. Estelle or Nico something or other in the final, which should be this week or next week.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Peter, since the Stoke collaboration, I've heard a few times, can we get them in here for a wrap-up?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, or maybe let's not use the term wrap-up for update. We may be working with them for, for many months and years.
So update.
Yeah.
Kind of towards the end of the year.
Great. I think they'd really, they'd really like to do that, and they've been helpful in work with students, in work with the staff as a whole, and then in facilitating some things, including occasionally our administrative meetings, which is fun. Cool. So this is good.
Can I ask a high school question?
Yeah, sure.
Graduation.
Yes, graduation is set.
June 5.
June 5 at Tanglewood.
If it's Saturday.
Not, no, or Sunday.
Sunday.
At Tanglewood, that'll be really fun, and it's going to be sunny and 82 degrees.
Yes. You know what time?
1:00. It's listed as 1:30.
It's listed as 1:30. We want students and their families there much earlier. There's, surprisingly, there always is a traffic jam on graduation day getting to Tanglewood, so if there's ever a date for seniors to be early, that's the day. Good. So what I want to do now is invite Lee in. Lee, just give me a sec. So Lee, you should be able to become a panelist if you click a little box. Nice to see you, Lee.
Thanks for having me.
Okay, great. So Lee's joining us from, and you know what, Lee, I'll let you do the formal introduction, but Lee's here to talk to us about comfort dogs, and, and he came in to my office maybe two, three weeks ago and sort of blew me away with his presentation and his little puppy, and, and he's trying to do something really remarkable in Berkshire County. So Lee, introduce yourself to the group and, and tell us about what, what you're trying to do.
Absolutely. Thank you, Peter. Peter, after this, could you possibly share the?
I did, there are two things. Your slide deck, everybody in the committee has it. If you want me to present it while you're talking, I'm happy to do that, too.
That would be great, and then we can go two birds with one stone.
Okay. Let me, let me pull that up.
So my wife and I, Caitlin, started Berkshire Poodles in 2010 breeding standard poodles in showing, and we, we started doing, donating puppies to an organization called BASK that does emotional support dogs for veterans and first responders. Fast forward a handful of years, we opened Berkshire Dogs Unleashed in Lenox, which is a full-service boarding, grooming, daycare facility, and we recently started Berkshire Comfort Dogs, where we donate, pretty much donate our Berkshire Poodles to our own nonprofit, and then donate them across the county to schools, nonprofits. My original goal for this was first responders. I was a Pittsfield firefighter for 10 years and left that position for things surrounding why I have such a passion for comfort dogs in these environments. As COVID hit, we realized that there was just as much a need for these dogs in schools, and that's really where it's taken off. We have two dogs in police station, or in police departments, and we'll have, by the end of summer, the goal is to have about 25 working in our Berkshire County schools. We also have them at the Y Berkshire Health Systems. County ambulance is adding one this, this summer, and then about 15 more going to schools.
Lee, just to interrupt for a sec, I'm trying to click the slides where I think you want, but if you want me to go faster, just say, click the slide.
Yeah, we can keep going through it, just, just enough times everyone can read it. It pretty much covers everything that I'm saying. There's, right now, the only cost to the district is dog food, which is about $50 in a month, and by the time any puppies that your district would have, dog food will also be free. So Berkshire Dogs Unleashed does all the grooming, any boarding that's necessary, which isn't always necessary, and all the training, and then Berkshire Poodles donates the puppies, so it's 100% free to everyone. Handlers and training-wise, we like to find one primary handler. Your primary handler would be someone who takes the dog home at night, has the dog on the weekends, and does a bulk of the training with the puppy during the day. The more secondary handlers, the merrier. As many people who are willing to take the dog and use the dog to reach as many kids as possible in the course of the day, the better. It could be, you know, as much as 10 different people. much as 10 different people a day taking the dog for, you know, 15 minutes to an hour. You know, maybe the dog better, betters one kid's life in the course of the day, maybe it helps 100. It's, uh, the more it can be used, the better. And that's really that, on, on that front. We would love to see some of our comfort puppies in your district, whether it's one as a program or, or multiple, or up for whatever the district is interested in.
Let me, Lee, let me finish through the slides.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to answer any questions while we go through it also. Right now, we have puppies due in April, so we could be sending puppies home with primary handlers for the summer, so that come September, we have five to six-month-olds that are pretty well on their training and not having to go out as frequently during the day. Winston's a celebrity everywhere he goes.
Okay. So I, I'll stop the slides, and I'm sure folks have some questions. I, I think this is a really neat opportunity, and, and I'm, I'm totally sold on it, and really appreciative that, that you're putting this together at, at such scale. Anybody have any, any questions? Yeah.
Have you identified people in the school system who are interested in?
No, not, not yet. We said, we wanted to get your blessing and approval to do this. And then, Lee, could you talk a little bit about how you, you've done lotteries and, and sort of a selection process in, in other places?
So we just did Lee High, or Lee High, Lee High School and Elementary School last week. We had 15 people interested in having some sort of involvement with what was originally, Lee was getting two dogs, one for the high school, one for the elementary school. The turnout we got was incredible. We got three primary handlers that are both excellent selections, and everyone else wants to be a secondary handler. So every secondary handler who was interested, we just accepted them into this. Because we had set three such solid candidates, Lee upgraded to taking three puppies on. So they're gonna have one in the elementary, one in the high school, and one that bounces between the two. So really, we did interviews for everyone who wants to be a primary handler. Obviously, some people think it's for them when maybe it really isn't. Hi, buddy. So we do do an interview process. It does fall back on us, so there's no hard feelings within the school system. There's no favorites, anything like that. And we place the best, with the best primary handler candidates.
Other questions, comments?
Will Berkshire Hills get three or one?
That's up to Berkshire Hills.
Bill, do you want three because we got three?
We could probably do four and beat them.
So Peter, what do you want to vote on?
I, I, I think, I think a motion to, to move forward with this comfort dog opportunity, and then we would have people apply to be primary and secondary handlers, and, and we'd work with Lee and, and his team and, and see where we, see where we land.
I make a motion to authorize the superintendent to move, to move forward and implement a comfort dog program as described in the presentation, and to take all reasonable acts in furtherance thereof.
Second the motion.
So a motion by Rich, a second by Bill. Any discussion?
So didn't Zoe already say there's comfort dogs at this school?
There are. And, and the, the sort of, like, when it rains, it pours, right? So i- in the school, in the high school now, there, there are two comfort dogs on a sort of part-time basis. Krista Dalton has one, and I think the other one is Pam Morehouse. There, there aren't in the middle and elementary school on a regular basis, so there had been at different times, and outside groups have, have come in. So this is an opportunity.
They're calling them therapy dogs, I believe.
They are going in therapy dogs.
And it's definitely different training-wise.
So an opportunity to, to expand some possibilities.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Ian?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Phil?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Corey?
Aye.
Rich? And I. It's unanimous.
Yeah, so thanks.
Congratulations. Unanimous is nice.
Yeah, yeah, right. We, we'll be talking tomorrow or Monday, and, and getting a process together and a message to, to staff. I think this is very exciting and, and, and will be fun, and particularly as we come off COVID. I think this is a really nice, nice opportunity. So thank you, thank you so much. We're really excited about this.
No problem. Have a nice night.
Okay, you too. Okay, so moving along, and this one, Steve, I could kick back to you, the appointment of the committee members around the communications process.
So this is gonna be a, not a permanent subcommittee, it's gonna be a short-term subcommittee of school committee members who will meet with the superintendent and, and other administrators. So I'll first look for people who are interested in being on it. We can have up to, we can have up to five. You know, I, I have my thoughts on this. It's my, my appointment. Rich, do you want to be on it? Or do you have the time to be on it?
I, I don't. I would like to be on it, but I don't know that I have the time to do it, and it's a short-term committee. I don't want to be missing a lot of meetings. So I think I will let somebody else take one of the permanent spots, but I'll certainly go to the meetings and offer any thoughts that I may have.
So I'll look for volunteers, though, but I have my own opinion. Who would like to be on it?
I'm a volunteer.
And Bill? Corey?
I'm happy to be on it.
Ian? I'm not saying volunteer, so I'm.
It's totally random.
It's totally random. Okay, then I don't need to. Okay, no.
Okay. Anyone else would like to be on it?
Jason would.
Yeah.
Molly? Okay, so we have Bill, and we have Corey, and we, Rich will serve when he can.
Again, I'll, I'll go on, and I will try to make meetings when I can.
And I think the deadline is September?
Mid-September.
Mid-September. We'd like it done earlier, actually. So let's not, let's not drive this out. We have enough meetings, so let's move this along.
Okay, great. So thanks for that. There are two things in the packet, and I'm requesting your approval on a, a new position or job description, the Assistant Principal for Career and Technical Education. And, and take a look at it, and we can, we can talk about that. And, and then the second one is the Green House Operations Assistant, which is just a teeny, a teeny change. Any questions about the Assistant Principal for Career and Technical Ed position? I, I, just a, a little context. I see this is a really important role as we look to expand our Certified Chapter 74 programs from two to, to potentially six. There's really a whole set of, of very precise technical skills there, and an opportunity to dramatically improve our opportunities around program design, creation, recruitment, supervision, and evaluation, and then partnerships within the community. For, for a little while, Sean Flynn did this work, or some of this work, and, and then it got split into two part-time stipended roles. And, and now I think we're really at a point where we're having an additional Assistant Principal to support this makes sense.
Can you explain the significance of, of, of the, the position now being Assistant Principal rather than a?
A director?
Yeah.
Yeah. We, we talked about this some, and this was not intended to be a bait and switch, but sometimes things like this.
I'm not guessing, I am, I'm just.
But, but, the, the intentionality around Assistant Principal was in, in part connected to supervision and evaluation, and, and also to, to value the role i- in a particularly explicit way within the, the context of the school, right? So one of the things that, that we've heard loud from the community in the context of, of discussions about the high school for, for a number, I mean, more than a decade, is vocational education, career vocational technology education is really important, and by, by labeling this as Assistant Principal as, as opposed to a Director, we, we think that does emphasizes that.
Is there, is there regulatory reasons for like? I know you said something about reporting, like, is there a regulatory thing with regard to the certifications that we need a principal who meets these?
No, it's Assistant Principal. No, I, I think in some schools that they use the titles interchangeably, Director or, or the other one. I, I think you can do the work of a Director on a, on a teacher's license, and you do the work of an Assistant Principal on Assistant Principal's license. It's important that if somebody's gonna formally evaluate people, they hold a Assistant Principal's license.
And this, um, this, this new position that's being created will not be in any of the faculty bargaining units, correct?
Correct, the, the way we are in this district.
Other questions? Corey?
Has there been talk about the job in the context of the new building project?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, some, right? So part of the new building project is gonna try to present, make sense, expand vocational opportunities, and, and if we find the right person with a really strong background in CBT-E, that they would play, I think, quite a significant role in thinking about what those spaces might, might look like.
So it's not something specifically we're looking for, but if we find it, then we use the person accordingly? Like, we're not actively seeking out someone that would play that role?
No, I mean, either way, they're gonna have input into a building process if, if they have previously worked in a, in a modern context, right? Something like Teconic or, or McCann, or like a, a fully functioning vocational program somewhere, then they bring us a, a really important skill set. But, but if we're not able to find somebody that's, it's been part of a much bigger program, somebody with, with a strong background in this would, would be good.
So it's a plus if we can find someone?
Yeah.
But we're not gonna re-advertise until we find someone?
I mean, like, like any position we ever post, right?
Yeah.
You, you, you try to find the best person for the role, and, and you see who's out there. The, the sooner we move forward with this, the sooner we post it. We're still in a, in, in my mind, in a good window. It's, it's just the end of March.
Yeah. I think my thought is just, it's not very explicit in the job description, and I didn't know if it was being left vague on purpose, or if it makes sense to put it in there in hopes that we do find somebody, or at least set expectations that that would be something that we want.
Yeah, I mean, the only, my catch-all phrase is the last bullet point of everyone, which is like, perform other tasks and assume other responsibilities as the superintendent and/or his or her designee may assign or, or delegate. I, I think it's sort of, it's implicit in all of it, but it's not explicit.
Right. And I'm just wondering, I couldn't, I'm sorry I'm beating it, but could that be a compelling thing that would actually attract somebody to know that they're part of building, potentially building something new?
I, I don't know if that needs to be in the job description, but it could be in a, in a cover letter or something like that, some statement before it. I see where you're coming from. That would be good. That might be an enticement, too.
I think this is it. I don't know that there's a cover letter or something else that comes out when it gets posted. So I just, I think our, if, if we think it's worth it, this is our chance to put it in there.
I mean, then we could put it in the ad, right? We could also put it in the, in the, in the form, like, the, this will be available for candidates to see, but maybe we put it in the posting on the, on the website. I'm also, if you wanna give me a bullet point to put under general, like, participate in the process to expand CBT-E program, I'm gonna put something like that in.
It might go onto the program curriculum line. As one of the collaborative post-secondary institutions coordinating programs, developing articulation agreements. It can be fit into somewhere, and I'm not good at the wording, but somewhere, something about a future expansion consolidation for a new, a new one, I shouldn't use, new renovated or expanding high school.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we approve this, or vote on this at least, hopefully approve it, with the understanding that Peter will wordsmith something in there in addition? We don't need to wordsmith it here.
I do kind of agree with the point that Peter made a minute ago, that was, is there's the job description, which is the job description, and there's the advertisement, which informs a person of what they're coming to. That's usually what you describe, the employment atmosphere. I think this is falling into buckets, but something in the advertisement about a school looking to build and expand CBT programming and develop a new school around it and report, you know, I think that will make, may make it an exciting opportunity for certain people to want to come to, that they're building a program. They're not just coming in to oversee existing.
So I, if you're open to it, I could toss out a, a bullet point for that. Work with the District and Building Committee to expand Chapter 74 programs in a newer renovated school.
Yeah.
For that, it's good.
We have mine.
Do I have a motion?
I'm making a motion that we accept the job description for the Assistant Principal for Career and Technical Education.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Bill, a second by Molly. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote. Ian?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Phil?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I. It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you for that. So in comparison, this next one is super easy. We have a Green House Operations Assistant position, and what's in the revised job description, which was from, the last time we revised it was almost eight years ago in June of 2014. It, under terms of employment, I just would like to add, daily hours may vary to meet the needs of the program. The, the thinking there, and I've talked to Paul Gibbons about it, who represents the grid, and, and he's fine with it, is almost everybody else that works in a school context is tied to the school calendar and the school week, and the people that are working in, around the Green House, we have to water and do things throughout the, the whole week. So this supports us some flexibility on if somebody's working Monday to Friday, or Tuesday to Saturday, or some other thing, or early or later in the day. It, it's not a huge change, but, but we see it as an important one, so I'm hoping you can approve that little change.
Do I have a motion?
Can I? Do you want to make a motion then?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Now a discussion.
Capable of lifting a minimum of 50 pounds? Does that mean they don't lift anything under 50 pounds? Don't you usually write that as the maximum? Are you gonna have Don't you usually write that as the maximum? Are you going to have people lifting more than 50 pounds?
Yeah, you know, that's interesting. That's, that's old language. If it's under 50, we don't allow them to.
No, no, no. I can't, I'm saying that you, yeah.
You have to be able to.
Be able to lift 50 pounds, at least 50 pounds.
Right.
We worded it a little bit better.
Yeah, you're, you're totally right, yes.
Any other discussion? Okay. We can fix that up. So a motion by Anne, a second by Bill. Roll call vote. Anne?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Aye.
Molly? Phil?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Corey? Rich?
Yes.
And I. It's unanimous. Okay, so the, the next one is around COVID, always a popular topic. The, the trends are, are, they're getting really good. They're creeping up again. I like to be optimistic about it. The, the cases found in pool testing continue to be very low. There were none at Muddy Brook this week. And I think we're waiting still for the high school and middle school data to come back. So that's, that's where we are. It's my understanding, folks, have lots of rapid tests and are able to do that. Today, we got maybe six cases of additional masks from MEMA, the Emergency Management Group. And, and a bunch of really fancy 3M N95 masks, which were impossible to get until recently. And these are for people, small people or people with little faces or something. So I tried one on and it did not fit me, but, but it was the nicest mask I ever tried on. So we're, we're getting those down to the elementary school for people who want to continue to wear masks. Likely at our next meeting, I may come back to you with both a proposal and our questions about pool testing. Part of me wants to wait to see where the numbers go, but the pool testing takes up with really a lot of time. And at this point, it might be mostly symbolic. The, the bummer is at the state level, it's getting increasingly harder to get a free PCR test in, in Berkshire County. So there may be an argument to continue to, to do it. So that's where we are on that. Any questions about anything COVID-19 related?
Unfortunately, it's up against it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. So we'll see. We're not meeting for a little while and the next time we meet, we'll have a better sense of.
What would the number be that we then have to sort of revert all the way back to masks?
Yeah, everybody always asks me this and I never give a, a clear answer because in my mind, there's not a number. It's, it's a whole bunch of different things. The, the number that, I mean, at one point, we were, and Anne was part of this for the whole duration, right? But we were talking about infection rates and then positive cases and positivity rates. And then the CDC started pushing the, the cases per hundred thousand and they wanted us under 60. And right now, we're around 78, maybe 85. I don't know if I looked at it today. So I, I, I think it's a, it's a whole host of things. So general sense of the number and then what category we fall in. And then if there were a whole cluster of cases in a particular class or, or grade, grade level. So I don't have a really good answer. It's more holistic. And, and we'll see. But I don't like where the, the new trend is, which is going, going back up. And often, Europe is sort of bellwether for us and parts of Europe are, are getting whack right now. And obviously, like all Shanghai is quarantined again, so we'll, we'll see.
I think somewhat it's going to matter how many positive, you know. The nice thing about the pool testing is you have some idea what's going on in the schools. I think it's great because now we have kids who probably had COVID, so they're still testing positive on pool testing.
Yeah. We're starting now to, to not test them, but there's a possibility they may get it again. There's also sort of the whole booster thing, right? So I just found out I'm, I'm eligible for second booster. I mean, a lot of us in this room. Coming for you, Rich.
I'm getting younger.
Yeah. So, and I mean, it just, it goes on and on and on and, and we'll work through it. Soon the weather's going to get warmer. We'll be outside more. There, there's the possibility we could be in a context where I, I recommend we go back to masks for a little while. And, and I hope that's not the case, but there's that possibility. Okay, so the only other thing I wanted to draw your attention to is the, the Regional School District Planning Board. So if you've been reading the newspapers, there's all sorts of things in the newspapers about the Regional School District Planning Board. And for our home audience, that's an eight-town committee with three members from each town. And the consultants to that group made a recommendation that we merge the districts and, and have one high school. And, and the group sort of just presenting that recommendation took the whole meeting. And there wasn't much time at the end of the meeting for people to comment. Maybe a dozen people commented. So the, the next meeting of the Regional School District Planning Board will really be to dig into that and discuss it. And then there'll be a few facilitated sessions by the Federal Mediation and Reconciliation Group. And then there'll be some community conversations likely hosted online to, to get some additional feedback. Earlier Tuesday this week, there was a, a student forum with students from, or organized by students from both high schools, National Honor Society. And maybe people as young as sixth grade participated in it and, and raised some questions. There's a really interesting tension, which is there's a ton of information out there. And most people haven't come close to scratching the surface of digesting that information, right? Hundreds of pages of reports written in explicit detail that are really thoughtful analyzing transportation and food and staffing and attrition and all this stuff. And then people sign onto meetings and, and ask questions that are largely addressed in all those reports. A common misconception is if we do this, lots of people lose their jobs. And in the, the consultant's report, they make an argument that it, it can really all be done through attrition as people get older and choose to retire anyway. So ton of information worth digging into. There are meetings coming up. The, the easy way to remember their website is it's just eight-towns.org. And all the meetings are listed on it. All the reports are there. There are executive summaries of reports and one and two pages trying to communicate it more clearly. So that's, I think that's all I got. Subcommittee policy is not met. Buildings and grounds?
Has not met.
Superintendent's evaluation?
No.
Technology is not met. Finance is not met. And we just heard the consolidation sharing, although it wasn't subcommittee. Peter, anything on the personnel you want to add? No, let me just, sorry, look quickly. A whole bunch of appointments tied to Project Connection and, and extracurricular activities. And a number of volunteers that were really psyched about, that, that still go through our process. I think that's it. One, Diane Netzer is a long-time paraprofessional and she did some great work for us. And, and she's decided to step away and, and go into some other work, largely gardening. So we, we wish her well in that. She's a neat person and I hope we bump into her around town. Just before I, I've already forgotten, we have 20 total people on the line right now. Any older, new business? You supported the committee? Yes. One, and maybe it missed it on the agenda or we skipped over it by accident. There, there is a, a calendar with tentative school committee meetings attached. So you all approved the calendar, but what we went back and did was, was put in school committee meetings. Doreen, Steve and I checked it. We checked it against religious holidays. I think it works and it makes sense. And, and they're listed on a page. And then it's also in, in the, in the context of it. The only one that's a little unusual is the way Election Day falls. The reorganization meeting is like the farthest possible date from it to leave room for people to get sworn in. So anyone has any questions or notices, any conflicts, just let us know. It's nothing we have to vote on. Right. Just to put in your calendar now. Seeing no old or new business, any public comment? And if, if you're in the public and you have comment, you can raise your hand and then I'll click on you. Seeing none, we are a generally unanimous consent. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night, folks.